I mean by what?
I'm just anticipating.
Great.
It is twelve P M. Time for the McCook City Council's special meeting to begin. Motion shows of the local shows all council members are here today. The Open Meetings Act is back there by the front door and it is posted and in is available for public review. Okay, I call this meeting to order. We have first of all, the regular agenda and on the regular agenda, an executive session may be held upon a majority vote of the council for the protection of public interest for a strategy session with respect to real estate purchase for a sports complex.
I move to go into executive session for the protection of public interest for a strategy session with respect to real estate purchase for a sports complex at twelve oh one P M.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, council? Okay, all those in favor vote okay, opposed no. Okay, junior says, I got it, I got it, okay. Five votes cast J, no votes cast A.
Okay, so with the executive session, we're gonna meet in the conference room really quickly. We'll be right back. I know we've got a large group here, so we won't look to have everybody file out of the council chambers. Just give us a few minutes and we'll be right back.
I move to come out of executive session at twelve ten P M.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor to come out of executive session, okay, opposed no. Uh oh, we lost me.
No.
Do you need to refresh? Does somebody need to redo it?
Oh. Yeah, okay.
Okay, and wait, again, I don't have a huge.
Who?
You.
Oh, me?
Sorry.
Yeah, technology.
Now?
Five votes cast J, no votes cast A. Okay.
I move to authorize the city of McCook staff to negotiate a purchase agreement with John Walters to purchase property legally described as part of the northwest quarter, northwest quarter, northeast quarter, northwest quarter, southwest quarter, northwest quarter, and part of the southeast quarter, northwest, section nineteen, township three, range twenty-nine, west of the six P M, Red Willow County, Nebraska, said real estate to be used for public infrastructure projects, which shall include ballpark facilities.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second of discussion.
Okay, um. First off, I just want to say thanks to everybody for showing up. You know, I've never seen this many people at a council meeting in my life, so. Heck, even my daughter's here, and so that doesn't happen very often. She's gonna find out whether her dad can actually read or not today, so. I prepared a statement because I know that there's a lot of questions that are being asked. You know, I'm not on social media, it's not my thing, but I think a lot of people are, and so I think from what I've heard, there are some things that need probably be touched on to explain why we're at where we're at. And a lot of where we're at right now is because it takes some time to negotiate things out. It takes some time to make sure that you explore every option you possibly can before you react. And that's kind of what we've been doing for the past year and a half, I'd say, two years. The vote actually occurred in November of twenty twenty-two, and so we've been working diligently on this ever since that time. So I want to thank staff and everybody that's been involved. I see a lot of people here in the debate that have been involved with this, and I really appreciate all your efforts. So thank you very much. The one thing I would ask, you know, please, everybody, make sure that we stay civil during the discourse. Sometimes it's not easy to do, but I think it's important, and so I would appreciate your cooperation on that regard. Okay, so, guys, this is gonna take a little while. I apologize, but there's a lot to say. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. And I really would like to say thank you to Lloyd and Elizabeth Benjamin for their generosity. You know, no matter what the future holds, we've never had a gift like this before that has been offered to the city of McCook. And we appreciate the intent of the gift. Today is an exciting day for McCook, and the city council and staff are ecstatic to share this day with you. I know there are a lot of questions and theories floating around our community regarding the ballpark. I'd like to ease some of the concerns and dispel some of the negative rumors and discourse. I have prepared a timeline of events to detail where we began with the ballpark discussion and where we are now. I think it will be clear to everyone that the steps we have taken will serve to provide amazing recreational opportunities for our youth and additional economic benefits while being good shepherds of the taxpayer and ratepayers' dollars. So it's gonna be bullet points, so be patient with me. In order to paint a comprehensive picture, I'm gonna start at the very beginning of the ballpark discussions and then work my way to the present. And I'm gonna do my best to focus on the pertinent details. I might have staff members that may jump in, or someone may jump in, feel free if I forget something, I would appreciate that. So starting off, in twenty twenty, Lloyd Benjamin contacted a member of the city staff to inquire about the possibility of a ballpark project in McCook. Mister Benjamin had also contacted a council member inquiring about the same issue. I was later brought into the conversation. Mister Benjamin stated that his wife and him would like to donate two point five million dollars to help build a ballpark. At the request of the donors, we kept the matter quiet in order to determine if such a project was feasible. Also during this time, Mister Benjamin informed city staff that he would be providing the planning and engineering for the project. A large amount of time was spent identifying a location for a ballpark. As everyone who is familiar with McCook knows, McCook is not blessed with large amounts of nearby developable real estate. The Benjamins located a lot that was for sale located at the intersection of road seven sixteen and drive through eighty-three. The lot was large enough for a recreational complex and within close proximity of McCook. For all intents and purposes, the property appeared to be a good location for a recreational complex. Individual discussions were had with the council members to determine if each individual council member was supportive of a ballpark project, to which the replies were yes. All the discussions were had individually so as to comply with Nebraska's Open Meetings Act. The Benjamins purchased the land in July of twenty twenty-one. At the time of the purchase, Mister Benjamin informed the city that he would deliver cost estimates for the ballpark project to us by October of twenty twenty-one. Mister Benjamin was experienced with ballpark construction and felt confident that he'd be able to give quotes and prices within that stated period of time. Since the purchase of the land and due to inflation and economic uncertainty, Mister Benjamin has informed city staff that he's had difficulty in getting comprehensive pricing and quality estimates. The lack of known costs has proved to be a complicating factor in proceeding with the ballpark project as originally envisioned. A group of stakeholders, which included the city, college, school, hospital, Legion, Y M C A, and various ballpark users, was formed in late twenty twenty-one, early twenty-two at the request of Mister Benjamin in order to determine what a new complex would consist of. The members were selected by college staff. At the beginning of twenty twenty-two, city staff began working on identifying potential funding options for pool and ballpark projects. Other communities that had developed recreational projects utilized an additional voter approved one-half cents, one-half cent sales tax to fund their endeavors. Staff contacted a bond underwriter to help assist with generating bond runs to determine available financing. A voter-approved one-half cent sales tax became the obvious revenue-generating device to build the two community projects. In April of twenty-two, two council members and city staff met with our bond underwriter and bond counsel to map out the ballot question and financing requirements associated with the one-half cent sales tax. During early twenty-two, city staff requested estimates and pricing updates from Mister Benjamin, understanding that it was imperative to have adequate information to protect the community's interest. As mentioned previously, Mister Benjamin stated that it was difficult to get estimates due to uncertain economic conditions. Despite the lack of estimates, Mister Benjamin did provide the city an initial ballpark complex concept and informed us that the entire project, which was two championship fields, two fourplexes, three soccer fields, a parking lot, thirty-two water wells, a lagoon system, and other related amenities, would cost approximately nineteen to twenty million dollars. Mister Benjamin stated that one of the fourplexes could be removed, which would result in a construction cost of fifteen million dollars. No additional specifics were included. Fifteen million dollars became the target number due to the fact that Mister Benjamin told us that the fifteen million dollar version of the project was a minimum amount he would consider donating his two point five million dollars towards. Also, Mister Benjamin stated that all fifteen million dollars had to be raised in order to proceed with the ballpark project. During May of twenty-two, financial discussions began in earnest. At that time, the city believed there was approximately ten million dollars available from the public funds and private donations. The Benjamins insisted that the additional five million dollars be fundraised. The College Foundation committed to serving as a fundraising entity for the project. During the summer of twenty-two, the city continued to honor the request of the donors to keep their identity anonymous. The city was also still lacking pricing estimates for the project. Despite the lack of information, the city began to work on bond authorization and attempted to make the project known to the public without disclosing the donors' identities. The item was discussed at town hall meetings and council meetings. Staff began working on the ballot language. Due to the mentioned uncertainties, the ballot question language was intentionally left fluid in order to assure that a project would occur if there was a favorable vote in November of twenty-two. Following one of the town hall meetings, a concerned citizen contacted city staff expressing concerns about the proposed method of irrigation and water service. Staff reached out to Jack Russell at the M N R D to discuss the issue. Mister Russell provided staff data that clearly illustrated that there was no underground water supply available at the proposed site. Staff relayed the information and data to Mister Benjamin. Mister Benjamin had estimated his proposed system of submersible wells at three hundred twenty thousand dollars. Staff contacted Miller and Associates to get an estimate for extending water to the site. Miller and Associates came back with an estimate of one point five million dollars, which was one point two million dollars more than the submersible well estimate. Staff was concerned that the additional cost would be absorbed by the ratepayers and look for alternatives. The recreational bond issue was discussed with the city council at a meeting held on August first, twenty twenty-two. The city council instructed staff to bring a bond resolution back to the council at the next council meeting for a vote. A resolution was passed to put the bond language on the November ballot at the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Due to the uncertainty of the funding available for the ballpark project and the preferred ballpark method and location, discussions at the meeting included two alternatives. The first option was a build project, the second option was a renovation project. The two alternatives were necessary in the event that Benjamin's proposed project would not come to fruition. The ballot question had to provide certainty that if the bond passed, a ballpark project would occur one way or the other. To this end, staff met with the Red Willow County Fair Board to discuss the possibility of renovating the J C complex if necessary, to which the fair board stated to come back to them if it appeared the first option would not work. During this timeframe, Mister Benjamin emphasized that he wanted to control and construct the project. Specifically, Mister Benjamin did not want the project to be a city project. Staff's concern was that if the city did not bid the project out for state law, the city could be subject to civil liability. Staff sought out specialized legal counsel to assist with its review of state law to determine whether Mister Benjamin's preferred method was possible since public funds were being used. Private counsel determined that Mister Benjamin's method of construction was allowable. However, the city would need to remain out of the construction phase of the project completely. The city's funding couldn't be part of the build-out due to concerns over those state paying laws. Our attorney recommended that the city pay a specified amount at the end of construction to account for the city's portion of the project cost. A purchase agreement establishing each party's responsibilities was recommended. Mister Benjamin was comfortable with the purchase agreement method of solidifying obligations. As part of the purchase agreement, Mister Benjamin stated that he would assume responsibility for financing any amounts necessary for project construction, or they would locate an entity to assist with construction finance. Everyone understood that the purchase agreement was conditioned upon the city paying and agreed upon amount at the completion of construction. Also during these discussions, staff was informed that the College Foundation would serve as the construction manager for the project, not just the fundraiser, and that any agreement would be between the city and the College Foundation. During this timeframe, staff became concerned about the continued maintenance and care of the proposed ballpark project. Staff stated to Mister Benjamin that it was the city's belief that turf was necessary in order to successfully maintain the ballpark. Turf need to be considered due to playability and maintenance costs. Staff was informed by Mister Benjamin that the project would not include turf. After the bond passed in November of twenty-two, staff had numerous meetings with the college, hospital, and college foundation. During our research of potential grant opportunities during this time, it became clear that Mister Benjamin's preferred method of delivery would impede the project's ability to receive grant funding. Additionally, it was clear that the sales tax exemption would not be available due to the fact the College Foundation was ineligible for such treatment. Also became clear during these meetings that nobody felt comfortable with the lack of information that was being shared regarding cost estimates and pricing. Other than drawings, nobody knew the specifics. At a meeting in November of twenty twenty-two, all the stakeholders, with the exception of Mister Benjamin, agreed that it would be beneficial for the project to fall under the city's umbrella. In February of twenty twenty-three, the city began drafting the purchase agreement between the College Foundation and the city. Staff worked with an attorney to form an agreement that fit Mister Benjamin's wishes while also serving to protect the city and its taxpayers and ratepayers. A draft was given to the College Foundation on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. No communication was received back on the purchase agreement until June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, when a revised draft was given to the city. A request was made by the donors for staff to sign the agreement, which was not feasible. Any such agreement had to go through city council. Staff informed the other party that a review of the revisions was necessary. Upon review, it was found that due to changes made by the College Foundation and Mister Benjamin, modifications had to be made to protect the city and its taxpayers. One of the purchase agreement revisions found in the College Foundation's draft called for the city to remove an exhibit that included the itemized specs for the ballpark. The specs were an important element as it provided the city with a list of deliverables, something that had been lacking despite repeated requests. Instead of specs, Mister Benjamin wanted the city to revise the exhibit to allow for a rendering to serve as a deliverable attachment. Staff replied that we did not need intricately detailed specs, but the exhibit needed to contain enough information to assure the city gets what it pays for. Following our discussion, the city was emailing the drawing with arrows pointing to various proposed elements in the ballpark. The drawing did not provide any additional information that the city did not already have.
If that's about it, we understand.
Based on the College Foundation revisions, the city made additional changes to protect the city's and taxpayers' positions. On July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, staff was contacted by Mister Benjamin stating they would like to meet to finalize the agreement. Staff was told there would be minor, that there were minor revisions to discuss. At a meeting held on July At a meeting held on July 28th, 2023, the next day, staff had the opportunity to review the revised agreement. It was found that the College Foundation changed the most fundamental provision of the agreement, with the College Foundation's proposal now requiring the city to pay for the construction cost during construction as opposed to paying for the project at completion. The city expressed concerns about the change, citing our continued position that we cannot violate Nebraska's bidding laws. Staff and council reviewed the Foundation's proposal and offered a revised purchase agreement, which put the onus on the Foundation if the city received insufficient deliverables. Staff began looking at the CMAR method of construction and attempted to convince Mr. Benjamin, excuse me, that the CMAR method would produce a successful project and make his vision feasible. The CMAR method is the same method used for the new swimming pool. Staff stated that by employing the CMAR method under the city's umbrella, grant funding would become a possibility, and the sales tax exemption on purchased goods would apply. Staff and city council members were told that such a method would not be acceptable at a meeting held on August 28th, 2023. Communication was limited following the August 28th, 2023 meeting, and it became apparent toward the end of 2023 that the project was stalled. Some important points that need to be made in order to dispel non-truths that are flying around. One, the Benjamins did not donate their land to the city. The land was conditioned upon meeting of the minds with respect to the ballpark construction project. Two, the voter-approved recreational sales tax will be used to build the ballpark. Three, the bond language was specifically designed to allow for the unknown due to the lack of information the city had, sorry. The bond language was specifically designed to allow for the unknown due to the lack of information the city had at the time of the vote. This fact was also made known during council meetings leading up to the required resolution vote. Four, the voter-approved the ballpark project, it is required to move forward, legally it is mandatory. Five, city council and staff have made every effort to make the project affordable without going outside the scope of what the voters approved. Six, the city does not own the JC complex, it is owned by Red Willow County. Investing millions of dollars into a complex that is not city-owned creates concerns. Seven, we don't have any additional space to build recreational fields. There are no other spaces owned by the city that is usable for recreational purposes. At the end of 2023, determination was made to reach out to John Walters. The city had worked with John previously with prospective drainage issues and potential sewer improvements, and the city has a good relationship with him. The city has been interested in Mr. Walters' property for a very long time, said interests predating current staff and council members. Part of the interest is due to the location of the property relative to city infrastructure. Mr. Walters' property is adjacent to a water line that runs along West Q Street. Another water main is located on Highway 83, flanking Mr. Walters' property to the west. Sewer extension has been programmed as part of our wastewater treatment plant project budget to occur within the next few years. Existing streets and highways serve as easy accessible routes to the property. If we were to go west to the Benjamin site, these infrastructure items would have to be accounted for. Staff has worked with W Design and Miller and Associates to estimate these costs. Infrastructure extension costs to the Benjamin property are as follows. Sewer extension, one million dollars compared to six hundred thousand dollars if we run it through the Walters' property. Water, one point five million dollars as opposed to zero at the Walters' property. Streets, five point eight million to six point eight million to make sure that we've got adequate accessibility. And note, this does not include potential highway improvements or West J Street improvements that may be needed to address accessibility. Taking into account the estimated project cost of fifteen million dollars, plus the extension projects that were not included in the original estimate, which total approximately nine million dollars, the Walters' property is much more economical to develop, even if the Benjamin donation does not come to fruition. The interest Mr. Walters' property was demonstrated by the city when it declared, or sorry. The interest Mr. Walters' property, the interest that the city had in Mr. Walters' property was demonstrated by the city when it declared the property blighted and substandard in 2019, which made TIP a feasible funding source for new development projects on the site, regardless of whether the property was owned by the city or not. Back at the beginning of the identification process associated with Mr. Benjamin's ballpark vision, staff identified Mr. Walters' property as one of the most desirable locations for development. At that time, however, the property was not listed for sale. At the end of 2023, when staff reached out to Mr. Walters to discuss whether the property was available for sale, John and Deborah Walters stated the property would be listed for sale, but only to the city of McCook. John and Deborah are some of the city of McCook and southwest Nebraska's biggest supporters, and they want to see the property developed properly to ensure McCook's continued viability for generations to come. Staff and council members are extremely grateful to the Walters for their willingness to work with the city. If this moves forward, a dream of many will be realized. The sales tax will only be used to purchase that portion of the Walters' property that will be developed for a sports complex. The city has other funds such as uncommitted sales tax funds, unused ARCA funds, reserve funds, and other available options to pay for the rest of the land. One thing that needs to be stated, people oftentimes, cities should be run like a business. Due to federal and state requirements, that's just not possible. As much as we would like it, it is the city's obligation to protect its citizens regardless of the situation. One item that needs to occur as a result of this process to create a policy which requires donors who wish to donate to the city of McCook to do so without restrictions that may be untenable due to the city's restrictions. Those restrictions are placed on it by the federal and state governments. The policy will need to outline the responsibilities of both parties. All of this said, we do appreciate the sentiment associated with Benjamin's gift. The city of McCook has never received such a generous proposed gift. Hopefully, the Benjamins will still want to donate to the project. In closing, I just want to state that today is a day that we may look back at and remember for a long time. The possibilities associated with this potential purchase go far beyond just the ballpark. City staff has never been as excited for McCook's future as it is right now. I would like to thank everyone that's been involved with this process, and I really want to give thanks to the citizens of McCook. I appreciate the fact that the ballpark was voted in, and I look forward to seeing what this is going to become in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, council, is there any other discussion? Does anyone out there want to discuss anything with the council?
I would like to just ask a clarifying question. With the JC complex, anytime to go, if it's gated and padlocked off, with this being a city-owned sports and recreation facility, would it be open to the public to go use at any time, or would it still be gated off and then only for setup events?
That's one thing we're lacking in McCook. We're lacking practice facilities, some places for the kids to go practice. I foresee, I'm not gonna say that it's gonna be open twenty-four hours a day because there may be some limitations. But this, whether it be the Benjamin property or Walters' property, our vision is to provide adequate practice facilities that can be utilized throughout the day.
So, I have just started a family plan on staying here for a long time. It'll be something I'd be able to go with my children and catch or just...
Absolutely. And then, that's one thing about the JC complex, is twelve acres. There's no more. Right now, we don't have any facilities for the community. There's a lot of people in here that contest for that. We don't. That's one of our goals, that's one of my biggest goals. We need open green space, we need places for soccer, we need a place for flag football, possible pickleball expansion, who knows? It's unlimited. And where this is adjacent to the community, easily annexed, the infrastructure's there. Me as a taxpayer, me as a ratepayer, it's a win-win. I too appreciate the Benjamin's donation, awesome. When they first came to me and said that this is what we want to do, I fell on my chair. We've never had anything like that, nothing even close. But as a ratepayer and a taxpayer, it just makes more sense to go to this location. So, I agree.
I agree with you on the location there.
Thank you.
And would you please state your name, please?
Colton Malsick.
Thank you.
The new guy.
I would have a question. I guess being as we're in...
And please state your name.
Jared writes.
I know.
Being we're in track season, I'll kind of use the track mechanism. So, basically, we've all started, we're back in the blocks, getting ready to take off. You don't have another project proposed right now, I'm assuming.
Another project as a... No, we would, right now, we would be starting over.
Correct.
We would be starting over. And it'd be city-led.
As this goes forward, is there any of the infrastructure that's currently at the JC that you would reuse at the new place, or is that all?
We will look into that, we've had those discussions, there may or may not be.
And are there any entities that were going to contribute to the other project that are still on board?
I believe so.
For this one?
I believe so. I can't speak for them, but it's my understanding, yes. The hospital's still on board.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else? Hi, Blaine.
Hello.
State your name.
Blaine. I just had a question, what is the purchase price of the, of the ground?
So, we're not sure yet, that's, I'm just getting the authority to actually negotiate out of purchase price. That will come back to the council once we get that established. So, we've had some conversations, but nothing has been solidified yet. So, we'll bring that back and everybody will know. I mean, all this is gonna be as transparent as day. The difficulty that we had beforehand was that we were working with a group, very, very thoughtful. We just weren't able to go ahead and say everything we wanted to say without offending. And that's a hard thing. You know, we do our best to try to make sure that we work with people, that we treat people well, and we try to honor their wishes. That was tough. We'll be coming back to the council saying, this is the number. And we'll have a chance for people to go ahead and comment on that at that time.
We, I kind of want to address why we were having closed sessions there for a while. It was very delicate, the people that we were trying to buy this land from, one, we didn't know that we were gonna approach them at that time, and since then have wanted to keep it quiet. And just now, we're getting permission to come out. We weren't trying to hide anything from any of our citizens. We were trying to do what we thought was best for the city taxpayers and not blow what we saw as a huge opportunity for the city to leap forward.
One of the things, the reason why you go into closed session is to make sure, and we didn't know exactly what the status of the ground was, we had no idea. We don't want to artificially inflate that number because someone else goes out there and says, oh, he's willing to sell, I'm willing to pay twice the amount that the city's willing to pay. So that's why you go into executive session to have those discussions.
Can I bring up one thing? If we'd gone to the Benjamins, because it was not a city project, and Kara can attest to this, there were all kinds of grants that we could not get because it was not our project. But with the Walters' project, because it is our project, there are many grants, right, Kara?
Right.
That we can apply for to help us pay for the cost of this. So that's one advantage we have for buying the Walters' property.
Yes.
I'm Jamie, all of you know me. I just want to say thank you, I know I've been at almost every city council meeting, pre-council, when there's comments. Some of this information has been out there, they have been trying to be very transparent to us as we're at those meetings, at commission meeting, same thing, they've been very transparent to us, letting us know what was available to be known. So those that are wondering why they weren't told, we were told, you just weren't at the meetings to hear that. So, I just want that to be said because it has been out there. And I know there's a lot on social media saying that nobody knew anything, this room is open first and third Mondays, there's a meeting here, that's my seat, this is ACC, there's a seat there. But, thank you, because I know this has been very tough on both the city staff and US council members to move our community forward, this is huge, having a boy that's gone through all of baseball collegiate level, now graduate moving forward. I will say that he has friends that are coaches that will not play in McCook in the facilities we have. That's, Dean's going from the East and the Panhandle. So, if we're gonna move forward with sales tax and have an economy, we need things like this to move forward. Had a grandson now coming up through, I want him to be able to go play T-ball ball and then into the Legion program later in life. So, thank you for all of your hours, thank you, city staff, we really appreciate this, and I can't wait to go to opening night at this ballpark.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else? Okay, any other discussion from the council?
Your honor.
Hey, are we ready for the question? All those in favor of authorizing the city to move forward? Vote yea, oppose nay.
Oh, there it is.
Mine is enough.
Scroll down. Of the motion.
Such a long question.
Oh, wow, yes. There we go. You got it, yeah. Five points per day, no more than that. Okay, being there, no further business to come before the council, I declare the meeting adjourned at 12:40 PM. Thank you, everyone, for coming, we really appreciate the cooperation. Thank you so much.